All the meeting is February 14th, Planning Commission to Order. We'll begin with the pledge of the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to welcome Jess back to this evening. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Sedoti.
Here.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Here.
Mr. Varga.
Here.
Mr. Cicero.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Perkovic.
Here.
Mr. Snow.
Here. Entertained a motion for the pool of minutes of the January 24th meeting, please.
So moved.
Second. Jess, when you're ready.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Good evening, my name is Tony Cerny. I'm the architect for Enterprise for this particular project. We're looking at instructing two buildings on the site up at the road. It would be actual leasing office, consists of just a small area for customer leasing and a break area for employees and some offices. And a second building in the back, which is used for prepping the vehicles when they come back, they go back and vacuum and wash them. Essentially, going to take the existing structures that are on-site and eliminate those and redo the site entirely. We've been working closely with the planning people and have arrived at this particular site plan, which Enterprise is able to, and I believe, planning people are able to.
Anybody else wish to respond? Kathy, you want to comment on this?
I just wanted to concur with the applicant. We've spent a number of meetings and phone calls working with Enterprise and Mr. Cerny to address some of the concerns of the Planning Commission. We have some old historical photos, if they are of interest to you, that Larry can pull up, just in terms of what was previously on the site. I feel that the site plan is, from a circulation standpoint, in a better position than it was previously, and we feel comfortable with the changes architecturally based on, again, the previous comments submitted and the design guidelines for the Village Core.
Now, I probably should have done both one and two at the same time, since they are compatible pieces of, on our agenda. So, Mr. Varga, you had comments based on the Old Village's design guidelines last time. Do you have any comments relative to the design guidelines now?
No, I think they've acknowledged the requirements of the guidelines, and I think they've got this, you know, they've done what they need to do to conform, and I don't have any real specific issue with it. Would we talk about landscaping, or would we wait for the second?
I think we'll talk about that when we get to item number two. So, any questions, comments for the applicant commissioners?
I do have just one question. I noticed with the building in the back, that you have an extremely high peak on that building. Is there any functional reason why the peak should be so high? Yeah, there's a picture of it right there.
Yeah, we were just trying to match the roof pitch to the building in the front.
In the front?
Yeah.
And since you do see it from the side, you really don't notice it that way. All right, that's fine.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
We're just discussing the CUP.
The CUP at this time, yes. Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the conditional use permit, subject to the six conditions stated in the staff's report.
Second.
Now, you've read the staff report. Do you have a problem with those six conditions?
We have no issues with conditions.
Okay. And Jess, call the roll, please.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Any comments you'd like to make relative to the building?
I think no additional, no.
Okay. Commissioners, questions for the applicant? Kathy, anything from the administration?
Nothing, other than what was noted in the staff report.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sedoti.
Ms. Mitchell, you saw the landscaping plan that's been submitted?
Yes.
Is the administration satisfied with the screening of the lot that's behind Arrowhead Music to the west of the detail building, that from Menter Avenue, it's properly screened? Because that area is designed, as the report says, it could possibly hold up to 95 rental cars back there. Now, we'd want the screening to be very much appropriate, so you don't see too much from Menter Avenue. Are you satisfied with the plan?
It does meet the requirements, the buffer requirements. Actually, we felt, our landscape architect reviewed the plans and felt that there was actually more than adequate amount of landscaping that was provided in addition, and recommended that maybe some of that could be dispersed on the interior of the parking lot. So, we were satisfied with what was provided.
Thank you. To the applicant, to move this a little bit closer to the historic nature of the area, the Village Core area, is it possible, would you consider, on your pedestrian walkway, which starts at the front of your building and goes back north, where you have the 22 parking spaces on each side for drop-off and delivery, is it possible to incorporate brick pavers into that walkway, soften the project a little bit more?
Well, it's certainly possible. Project already is very significant in a cost standpoint. I've worked with Enterprise for 20-some years, and we've never done a project that is this extensive or this costly. I know that they've already gone well over their anticipation to try to do this, but they don't want to make this happen, because it's a pretty hard one. I'd be willing to talk to the client about whether he would do brick pavers. What about stamped concrete versus brick pavers?
I think we've been down the stamped concrete road before. I'm not sure we want to go back down that road, but...
What happened when you did that? That's a no, I guess?
Basically, it was a no.
Well, you have to come back with a final site plan.
If you talk to the client between now and then, let us know what they say.
Now, when you ask for brick pavers, how far back do you anticipate you want the pavers to go?
Just to the end of your walkway. You have 22 spaces on both sides of that walkway. Now, we think you're just...
Talking about all the way along down that central walkway there?
Yes.
Because that's just asphalted striped, what that is.
Oh, that's not a walkway?
It's a walkway, but it's the paved surface. So, vehicles that will come and go are able to come in there. So, what Enterprise does is they have to control, you know, customers coming on, customers leaving, try to segregate the rental cars from where customer parking occurs, as best they can. This is really kind of a compromise compared to what they would normally be trying to do, the plan we came in the first time, address more the way they want to try to move customers on-site. Here, what you'll be able to do is, when they're bringing customers in, they'll go ahead and, when a customer's returning a car, he may, he'll be coming in through the drive, they'll drive through that first parking space, and they'll stop him at the second parking space to the right, to back, further back. And then they'll park, put a car behind him, so they'll stack the cars. If you ever go to a rental place, they just keep stacking the cars in line. They're going to try to do that same thing, and they'll do the same thing for cars that are leased. Then customers can get out of the car, and they can walk down that designated walkway. It's not a sidewalk, but it's a walkway on the pavement that'll be hatched to get over to the rental office itself. So, both directions. The thing that's really missing from this plan, from what Enterprise would like to do, is they would like to have that all protected. That's the original scheme. We had canopies over top of the returns and the, where the people pick up the cars, so they're protected from the weather. And it also gives them the ability to light the vehicles better, so they can better see the condition of the car before they go out and come back. This plan, because of the way we've had to do the layout with the single drive and move the building to the front and not be able to circulate all the way around, we've put lighting, you know, along that center row, but that center row is intended to kind of operate. So, every time someone comes in, all the cars are moving forward. When the Enterprise staff moves the car to wash, it goes forward, they're not backing up. When they lease a vehicle, the vehicles are stacked in those, pointed out, person gets in the car, they drive forward. There's very limited backing occurring with the vehicles that are leased. They try to avoid that at all, whenever they can. So, the only backing will be for customers that park in customer parking lane over the left-hand side.
So, if you were to raise that area, that wouldn't accommodate the smooth flow of traffic?
It wouldn't allow us to move the vehicles through that area.
That answered my question, there's no curbing there, so... Last question, you mentioned decorative columns in the front. What type of decorative columns you're talking about?
If you look at the elevation, it's kind of a straightforward, it's like a paper wood appearing column. We're going to, they'll be made out of PVC material, but they'll be decorative, base column cap.
And then, I'm sorry, one more. When you come back with your final site plan, please show us the proposed ground sign that you're proposing, that's 10 feet long in front.
Okay, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That would have been on, I thought that was on the site plan, but maybe it got missed this time.
So, could you go to the second building for a second on that drawing, Larry?
The office building and past the building.
I'm just thinking, there's a long wall on one of the sides, one of the elevations.
Right.
Is there anything that can be done to minimize that long expansive wall?
Well, both walls are kind of like it. That wall's the one that faces out towards Menter Avenue, that's on the screen right now.
Okay.
The wall on the other side is the one that's facing into landscape backyard area or something like that.
So, it's not...
It's all mechanical equipment.
Car wash equipment, is it?
Yeah.
You're going to service vehicles there?
No vehicle servicing. The only thing they do is vacuum, wash the cars.
Okay. You don't have any problem with that?
No.
Okay.
I do have a comment. There was some question raised, or concern raised, about the nature of the ownership of the property, and I just want to confirm with Mr. Cerny that this will be an ownership, the property will be owned by Enterprise Rent-A-Car, once the transfer occurs, correct?
I don't know the specific title that's going to be used, whether it'll be under Enterprise's name itself, or whether it'd be under another name associated with Enterprise, but it's Enterprise envelope, yeah.
But there will be no sale of used vehicles on the site?
Sale.
So, any questions for the applicant? One more, Mr. Sedoti.
Thank you. If you get the approval tonight, what's your projected timeline for commencement and completion?
They're itching to go. We're working on the working drawings right now. I think, come back next time, whenever I can come back next time for the final approval, they'll try to bring... This project is probably going to be six...
I have a question.
You have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. Especially with the building in the front, is there any exposed mechanical or electrical equipment that we don't see in the elevations now, that's outside the building envelope?
I haven't really decided exactly how we're going to handle the mechanical on a building in front. Initial intention is to do a split system, so there'll be a condenser outside someplace for the landscaping. That's probably about it. I mean, there'll be an electric meter and stuff.
Right.
Really, then probably the condenser.
Yeah, that was my question, based on the floor plan, there wasn't a mechanical room, so...
There's a little mechanical room.
Was there? I didn't, okay.
Yeah, just a small one.
Just a furnace or something like that?
Yeah, we're just doing a furnace. A bit of IT.
Well, then, you're right with the assumption that any equipment needs to be fully shielded with landscaping. And that was just a comment in general, and I know we don't, I don't have it in front of me. Do you have the landscaping plan on the current one that was? I just wanted to make sure, too, that the building had what we call foundation plannings in the front. And it's some mature, I see you have it all around. Just enough plannings to make it, you know, fit into a sense of a developed area. You know, there was a dealership just down the road, just behind, you know, you can see how they approached landscaping and the design of their building, and that kind of set the tone for this kind of, you know, auto-oriented use in the city, in the village center. So, if we can make sure that the landscaping is sufficient to create that kind of feel. I notice there's a, you have a gated waste garbage collection point. What's that surround made out of, you know?
I don't think we've designed it yet. Usually, what we try to do is make it something that matches the building itself.
That would be, that would be fine. That's where I would suggest you go with that. And whatever landscaping you need to maybe make that kind of go away, too.
And the gate's got to be spring-loaded, so that they remain closed all the time, except when they're dumping trash, obviously, or the trash is being picked up.
Okay.
But what we find generally is, if we don't stipulate that, gates remain open throughout the course of the business day, and we don't want to see that.
Okay.
And I just want to say, because I think I was going to have brought it up the last time, I appreciate the effort you've gone to, to adopt your design to the Village design standards, and, you know, that makes it acceptable to us.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman? I have another question. This is really for the administration. On the signage Mr. Sedoti made mention of, and our renderings, they really have just a generic Enterprise sign on there. Is there any Village Core guidelines that they should be aware of that possibly dictate non-internal illumination and so forth?
I'm going to see, I'll have to take a look at that.
Okay.
We thought that sign was compliant with the requirement.
Right, yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah, not, not... There are specific design guidelines for signage, for standing signage, in the Old Villages, as well as wall signage, and so we advise the applicant to take a look at the sign code, and specifically, the Village Core. That sign is not compliant with the code, so, thank you.
So, you'll do that, obviously?
Yeah, we'll look at it.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion. And we'll see you again for the final, correct?
I'll make a motion to approve with the seven conditions.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Jess, when you're ready.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Thanks for working with us on that.
That was the CUP approval, right?
No.
Okay, great, thank you.
Item three, architectural review of a commercial building Hobby Lobby of 7852 Menter Avenue. Entertained a motion to remove it from the table.
So moved. Second.
When you're ready.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Thanks for working with us on that.
That was the CUP approval, right?
No.
Okay, great, thank you.
Item three, architectural review of a commercial building Hobby Lobby of 7852 Menter Avenue. Entertained a motion to remove it from the table.
So moved. Second.
When you're ready.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Hi, Becky Shingler, Hobby Lobby.
Right.
Our revised architectural...
Okay.
Request was made for an actual sample.
Do you have an actual sample?
An actual sample.
Go ahead.
It's unpainted, but this is what it will look like.
So, Mr. Varga, a comment?
Could you lift that up just, I can't quite see what you're...
It's heavy.
It's a form, it's a form work on the face of the panel, right?
It's correct.
That creates, yeah. Yeah, I looked at the, you just go to Google Map, and I looked at the Beaver Creek, and you're following the same design line, you know, all the design details and everything are there, except for the south side, which we have another design set of details, and I think that's fine. That's what we said last week, or three weeks ago, last meeting. I'm only speaking for myself, I don't want to speak for anyone else, but...
Are you finished?
Yeah, yeah.
I just have one question. Can you put those vertical columns back in, that you had in the initial presentation?
The...
That would be a yes, I think.
Yeah, the answer is that yes, it's possible. We would prefer to eliminate it, so the building is, you know, reflective of what's here, but, but yes, it's possible.
Okay, so you could do that?
We can, yes.
Okay, good. Is that okay with you, Kath?
That would be wonderful.
Thank you.
That's good.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I just, I just want to reaffirm something that we always state. I just want to reaffirm the fact that, and I look at the drawings, and I see the little dotted lines with mechanical units. We don't want to see the mechanical units from the parking area, or the drive around, or even from the road going by. So, I'm taking your word that we won't see that, that the parapet heights are high enough that we don't see the equipment.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So, do we need to stipulate about the billing, about the brick?
About the vertical columns?
Yeah, okay. We'll add that as a condition. So, I'll entertain a motion, if there's no other questions. Anybody at all?
I'll make the motion with the one condition, to put the columns back in.
Just make note of which elevations. We had put in the report the west, north, and south elevations for the columns.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is there anything specific relative to the color, the material of those columns, since it's not...
Well, it's got to be certainly compatible with the building materials that they presented this evening.
In terms of color or contrast, I just want to make sure that, since they're not actually in the revised elevations, that may cause some confusion when it goes to permit, so...
Let's just, these were vertical strips of brick, of actual brick?
Actual brick?
Well, I didn't. Kathy, you guys had that in your report, and I, the vertical were actual brick columns along the sides?
Yes, they were, yeah, they were in the, in the previous plans.
Right, that was the only brick they were showing. Well, let me ask you this, just, the rest of that wall is going to be colored as if to match the brick. If these were also just natural brick and then painted, and then the colored brick, concrete, is that, are we going to get to the point where we're going to see two different colors, almost of the same color, but not quite?
I think we were looking at the contrasting color as shown on the main facade, the entrance where the Hobby Lobby lettering is. I'm looking, we're trying to blow that up to show the color. That's, might be Tara Brun, is that correct?
Yes.
If you are agreeable to that, that would be a contrasting color.
That column versus the wall, the corner, is that what you're saying?
Okay.
That's the previous plan, and that's how it was presented, and that's what we were hoping to see accomplished.
But now, the entire wall is that color.
Right. An actual brick, it's not going to, other than the mortar...
I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just trying to be clear. So, to me, and it's only my opinion, that if, with all the panels being brick textured, and all of them being colored to match the brick color, I don't know if a vertical column is going to stand out at all, or be of any consequence.
Mr. Philippiac, did you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Snow. I think we had discussed a little, some different options with that. I think perhaps the contrasting color that's behind the Hobby Lobby sign, the orange wall sign, what is that, what is that color?
Mickey Hux.
It'd be my thought that that would be a nice contrast to the...
See, I think, you're shaking your head, no.
Wouldn't that work?
What we could do is, if you want columns on the side, we could break them up with the reveals of the Greek villa, just like the columns on the front are. So, it's the same, it will look like a column. The only difference would be the Greek villa will kind of make it...
No, these walls are fairly expansive, so I think what we want to do is, we want to have some articulation on those walls, and I think that's where the comment came from. Am I right?
Correct. So, we could take the spacing of the original drawing and do reveals of that width with the white...
The white banding on...
White banding.
Yeah.
So, it will all be the same, except for...
That's the front. They'll look the same as the front column.
Yes.
And there'll be a joint, vertical joint, and then you'll have that striping on it, so it'll look similar to that.
So, it'll look like that.
Right.
We could do that. I just think natural brick, along with this brick, will look, I don't think it'll look like...
Well, you're not going to match it, yeah.
Well, there is an alternative, and the alternative would be an all-brick building.
Yeah, I mean, I think...
Whoa.
I think, you know, for...
You're sharing like...
Yeah, for us, you know, unfortunately, I think everybody would prefer, you know, it'd be brick, it's just cost prohibitive for us to be able to accommodate that. So, assuming that we're in a, you know, we're in a position where, where we have to put, you know, the columns on the side, I think one option would be to use the same application, same finish, we would paint, and make it all consistent across. If that's acceptable, that would probably solve all the concerns about color.
And...
With the strapping.
Right. And we got them to get away from that gray color, because it was literally large pieces of gray concrete, and we didn't want to see that. And we looked at some, just to explain where we were coming from, we got away from the contrasting colors to something that looked like it was all brick, and we used the example of the Beaver Creek project that they had done, and they have now represented that, except now for these other details we just talked about. But I'm happy that what they, what they did...
So, you're agreeable to that? The columns with the banding?
Yes, I, we can, we can accommodate.
Okay. And with the foundation plannings and the irrigation, you got to turn the irrigation on.
Yeah, well, certainly, we, yes, we are, we're going to do what we need to do.
Okay. A lot of people put the irrigation and don't turn it on, which doesn't serve anybody's purposes.
I think, you know, we, I hear what you're saying. But we, I think we've got, we've got some examples recently of some nice irrigation that's on, over by Outback and other places, so...
Okay. So, entertain a motion, if anybody has any additional questions, please bring them up now, otherwise, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, one, one extra clarification.
Right ahead.
The brick column detailing that we're adding, are we, are we saying that that's going to be a relief of some sorts for a shadow line? It's not just a...
It's a reveal, so it will have depth.
Okay, that's what we're really looking for, thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So I'll make the motion as presented tonight, with the columns as described, with the banding.
Second.
Do you have the building material samples that you can, you have those, Larry?
Are welcome to keep that.
You're not going to put them back in the FedEx box?
I do have the FedEx box.
I know, I saw you in the parking lot with it, that's, I'm sure it was. Do you have a second?
Yes.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four is tabled, tableed at a previous meeting, will remain on the table tonight. Item five, final subdivision, create 56 residential lots in Phase Two in Johnny Cake Ridge. See that applicant's here? So I'll entertain a motion to remove it from the table.
Second.
Good evening, I'm Tim Posar from the Deos LLC.
Tim, we've got to call the roll first.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Sedoti.
I know you're excited.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Now go ahead.
Good evening, I'm Tim Posar from the Deos LLC, and we are here for the final subdivision approval for Ridgewood Greens. This is a revised request. We met with the administration this week to work out details that you folks brought up at the last meeting. We came up, reviewed all the 11 conditions. Today we revised number six. We agree with all of them. We do have a slight concern with number six that we would like to tweak a little bit, but besides that, we're in agreement.
What's your concern with six?
We have a one-year deadline in there, and our concern is timing because of this part of the country with weather. If a builder would pull a permit to build a house, say, November, we have one year from November to do the roadway, to connect it. Our concern is, we really won't be able to start till springtime on that, and we're already five, six months behind. So if we could add some language, it would give us flexibility if we hit a scenario like that in clement weather, that we would, you would work with us, because we would be working on the road, it might not be completed in that timeframe.
So what's the reasonable timeframe in your mind?
Six months.
Is that agreeable to me?
An additional, you mean?
An additional six months, yeah. And again, it's only if we hit that inclement weather because of when that 30th permit was pulled for a house.
So a year and a half?
Yes.
Mr. Snow, the rest of the commission hasn't had the benefit of seeing the revised, the revised condition number six?
Yeah, I'll be happy to pass it either way.
If you, would you like me to read it?
Yeah, why don't you just...
Okay. So...
Mr. Vargas, we've got to keep him awake, so...
So the revised condition, as what, from what was passed out to you earlier, is the permanent road connection to Johnny Cake Ridge Road from Phases One and Two shall be constructed within one year from the date a building permit is issued on the 30th home within Phase One, including model homes. The bond and/or acceptable, except, I'm sorry, acceptable security shall remain in full force and effect until the permanent road connection is complete and further accepted by the city. Once the permanent road right-of-way is constructed and accepted, the use of the temporary access drive shall cease and be removed by the developer.
Year and a half is good, right?
Yeah, yeah. Again, just in case we run into the weather situation with, whenever somebody pulls that 30th permit.
Okay. So you're not going to, you're not going to push it to a year and a half?
No, no, no.
A year and a half is only there in case you need it?
Yep.
Okay.
Because you're asking for it to be completed in that one year, and that's our only concern.
Can we add, with the acceptance of the city? I mean, that provision, but with the acceptance of the city, that extension?
Yeah, we'll work with the city, yeah, that's not a problem.
Okay, any other questions?
So then it's written as one year with the opportunity to extend six months...
With the exception...
With the exception, the exceptions of the city.
Yeah.
Mr. Filippiac, did you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We sat down and we had, I think, a very constructive meeting with the applicant, and I think this addresses all of our concerns. We would have no trouble with that extension.
Okay, thanks.
The optional extension.
Thanks.
That's a good suggestion.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion with the 11 conditions, with number six modified, with the extension.
Six-month extension.
Six-month extension, thank you.
If needed. Right?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
That's when you're ready.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
No.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Under new business, final site plan and architectural review of a commercial building at 5750 Isley Road. Is that applicant here? Identify yourself for the clerk, please.
Senator First Few Macca with Hamitrich &amp; Associates, the applicant.
Give us a quick overview of what you'd like to do there.
I thought you had your roll call, sorry. Yes, we're here for the Avery Dennisin...
We know who we are, so we don't need a roll call for us.
Thank you. Yes, the Avery Dennisin Corporation is looking to expand on their south end of their facility, a 50,000-square-foot building. This plan was before, well, not before everybody here, but in 2004 it was submitted. They were going to build at that time, this exact expansion, but at the time they didn't build it, but now we're here before you, asking to...
Has anything changed from that original approval?
I think there was some height issues. I can't remember anything, I mean, just, we tried to just meet current code is what we basically changed.
Kathy, any comments from the administration?
Just to address your comment, there was a height variance granted, not to exceed 54 feet, but this proposal doesn't, doesn't reach 54.
Easy approval, right?
Yes.
So, questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sedoti.
The recommendation by the fire department to connect the north parking lot via an access drive to the west side, are you okay with that? You're going to do that?
I think there's some constraints as far as getting around that access there. It's really, no, there's an existing water quality type unit there, so we could possibly look at it, but it's going to be pretty tight to get an actual 20-foot access around that.
Have you communicated that to the fire department, the potential problem?
I have not yet, no.
I think you should do that.
Okay.
Are the three delivery doors on the east side of the building that face Isley, are those going to continue to be in operation?
The existing ones, yes.
Yes, those three existing ones.
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell.
Yes.
Do we want, I saw the staff's recommendation of consolidating the two parcels. Do we want the plat of consolidation to be filed concurrently when applying for the building permit, or prior to applying for the building?
I guess I'll defer to legal on that one.
I wouldn't have any preference of that, of course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We are in the process of looking into that and getting it submitted.
So you will have a conversation with the fire chief?
I will.
Or his department, whoever he designates to have the conversation with.
I will do that, yes.
Good, thank you.
So we'll make that a condition, that you need to meet with the chief, or his designation. Okay? Any other questions? Motion.
Motion to approve with five conditions, the fifth condition being that the applicant shall meet with the city of Menner's fire chief to discuss the possible access road from the north to the west around the building.
Is there a second?
Second.
Chief, does that meet with your requirement? Is that good?
It does, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we were aware that there may be some challenges with that.
Okay. Okay, but as long as you discuss it, that's fine. Is it really going to happen?
Yes.
Okay, good.
It's going to happen.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Thanks. Preliminary site plan of an office building at 8100 Norton Parkway, is that applicant here?
Yes, sir.
Identify yourself for the clerk, please.
Jason Baylor with Paint and Paint Builders.
Okay. And give us an overview of what you're going to do there.
Sure. What we presented was a plan for a new dental office building, part of a three parcel, mansion to the, improvement of property, and we've got approximately a 5,000-square-foot building, a primary entrance, patient discharge area that's undercover, and parking lot and general arrangements for consideration here. What we're looking for this evening is general feedback and incorporate into our development for the site.
So you indicated it's a dental office?
Yes, it's a surgery center.
Okay. Is that your understanding, Kathy?
Jaw implant surgery, surgical center?
Correct.
Okay, good. I just wanted to be sure, since it showed up on the agenda as something a little foreign to me, but that's okay. So you have, you have, you have the preliminary before us this evening?
Preliminary this evening, yes.
Commissioners, any questions regarding the preliminary site plan?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
You presented also with the preliminary site plan, the, I guess, these are architectural renderings?
Correct.
Are these to be anticipated as somewhat the design approach for this building?
That's correct. So also wanted to talk about materials and textures, general massing of the structure, and, and seek your feedback.
Well, my own personal opinion, I think it's an excellent-looking building. I do have a question, and that is that when this was previously presented to us in general, the property, the development of all three lots, that this would be a campus kind of environment. And so my thought, or my question is, and you may or may not be able to answer this, how would this architectural look apply to the other future structures? I know they may not be designed, but is it your intention to carry on this architectural look with the other buildings on these properties?
Well, we're not developing the other buildings on the site. The, there's no plan for the structure that's behind us. There are three parcels, two that have direct frontage on Norton Parkway, and then there's the one in the back. There's no plan currently for Lot Three, as indicated in the drawing on the screen. And our project is especially an in-betweener, considering the substantial size of the project that's on Lot Two. And the attempt with our structure is really to blend the nature of the business and the building that we're creating with some of the residential constructions across the street to and near some of those aspects.
Well, I think you've been successful with doing that with this building. I guess you would, might want to carry the message back that we would then further anticipate that as a scheme for the other buildings that may be proposed in the future, but not, it's not a requirement on you, obviously.
Understood, I will, thank you.
And only other issue or response to this, it's not an issue, you are building on a, about, probably it looks like less than 50% of the property of this, this development. We would want to see that the bulk of the property is properly landscaped, not just with grass, but with some other landscaping materials, so that the entire property would be brought up to a certain level.
And so if I can make sure that I have some clarity, you're speaking to what is represented as Lot One, and our property, not worried...
Yes, just your, just your property, that there is still a somewhat significant amount of open space, and that you treat it with a certain landscape design.
Certainly, landscape is something for development. We had something very preliminary put together, wanted to make sure that the building and the general site arrangement was suitable before we continued. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, yes.
One of the conditions that we noted was the excessive number of parking spaces beyond the maximum on the site. I just would like to hear from the applicant, the need for the additional parking spaces.
Can you comment on that?
Can I introduce the owner of the property?
Absolutely.
John, do you mind speaking to the parking a little bit?
No, not at all. My name's John Mascaro, I'm one of the, going to be one of the owners, and my partner Carl Choi as well. What we see in so many places, by the time you, winter comes around, parking spots are lost because of plowing and things like that. Parking on the backside of the building is going to be all for employees, there's probably 14 spots that are going to be taken up by our staff. That's going to leave pretty much the front parking in that area. By the time, you know, what we don't want is just a concern that people can't find parking. And I see in other buildings, I felt, you know, that we'd have a little bit more than what's needed, also consider what's lost during the winter, when it snows, you know, being plowed and pushed and so forth.
Since you're the property owner for all the properties, you take...
No, not for all the properties, just, we're going to do a lot split, so just this piece of property.
So you're going to lay off the other properties to whomever they, is going to develop those?
That's correct.
Okay, then never mind. I was going to ask you to convey the same message that Mr. Varga asked the applicant to convey to the other owners.
Sure, I understand.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Entertain a motion. Kathy, is that satisfactory answer to the...
Yes, certainly, there's enough room on the lot, it just, you know, it's a point of the, of the parking code that, you know, talks about it, when you exceed the maximum, some clarification.
Okay. Anybody at all?
Make a motion to, to approve with six conditions? Second.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Okay, you're all set.
Thank you.
This latest review of a proposed rezoning from R4 Single Family to RVG Village Green. Send your partner home?
Dustin Keeney with Polaris Engineering and Surveying, doing some site survey and civil work. We're here on behalf of Chuck and Scott Andrews. We're proposing a RVG development on just over 16 acres located at the addresses of 8180 and 8188 Garfield Road. It would be 41 RVG lots, providing just over 4 acres of open space, which is a little over 25% of the site. In the spirit of the RVG code, trying to provide, from the code, a quality neighborhood with open space through the preservation of natural areas and provision for recreational space, we've got open space, trying to surround as much of the site with open space as we can to be able to preserve some of the nicer trees, provide a walking trail path that would circumvent most of the perimeter and also come to a central park slash playground kind of open space area. The walking paths would be interconnected with the sidewalks that would be required along the streets, creating two cul-de-sac lots. It's their feeling that cul-de-sac lots are very, I guess, they're very desirable, the way that it's set up with the topography falling, the site falls about 30 feet from south to north. The cul-de-sac lots would be set up where they would be able to be walkout-style units. They're hoping for a higher-end product in here, so the orientation of the development takes, takes advantage of that elevation. As far as the location on the site, I know there are concerns about the relative location of the intersection with Norton Parkway, and we can look at potentially adjusting that, but there was some thought that went into that part of it, as you go from south to north on Garfield Road, there is, as you get into kind of the midpoint of this property, there is a substantial elevation, kind of a drop in the roadway. So honestly, in that middle part of the, of the property, there are some potential, we would think, maybe sight distance issues, so we were trying to keep the entrance kind of towards the top of the, of the hill. I know that we're not quite at the 200 feet, but with that being said, I guess if we shift, But with that being said, I guess if, if we shift, were to shift everything north, part of it, we're trying to keep the symmetry of the open space. If you were to take that whole thing and shove it north another 50 feet, you lose some of the opportunity for the open space on, on the north end. And I know there's been discussion of, or not discussion, part of the staff report was relative to cul-de-sac length and a second access. And we don't take those issues, you know, safety obviously is very important, we don't take those issues lightly. We have not studied specifically a second entrance. I guess, just initial thoughts would, would be, if we were to try to incorporate a second entrance on this, it would probably wind up in one, in that area where you've got that, that dip in the road, and we would be concerned about potential site distance issues. I just want to make sure from a, a big-picture perspective that we're not trying to satisfy, I, I know the fire code recommends after 30 units that you have a second entrance. We would be at 36 off of a single entrance. I just want to make sure, from a planning perspective, that we don't try to come up with a way to get a second entrance in here and then create more of an issue within a second intersection and potentially vehicle, you know, over, or try to fix one safety thing and maybe potentially cause another problem. So, we're here to, to get some feedback and some, some overall impression from the commission, and we appreciate your input.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Belglow is R4, Eleanor is R4. Why can't this be developed as R4?
I'm, I'm sure that it could be.
I think that's one thing we're gonna want to see, is how, how would a typical subdivision lay out on this site within R4 zoning?
And to just back that up, we have consistent zoning there now. The zoning for this property is R4. Why would we want to change it? From a planning point of view, keeping consistent, consistent zoning would be, in my opinion, a good thing, a good planning principle. We should at least evaluate this property from an R4 point of view initially. The, the architecture, or the Village Green zoning, it was, there's many thoughts about it, but one of the, one of the impressions I have about why it exists is to deal with property that is other than rectilinear, you know, strangely shaped properties or properties that are dominated by natural features like lakes, or drainage areas, or other issues like that. This is a completely rectilinear piece of property, so it's up to you how you want to divide it up. So I think the thought here is that, before we consider changing the zoning, I think we need to see that there's a reason to do that, and, and I don't know that I see a reason to do that. And by keeping it R4, I think that might mitigate the whole cul-de-sac length and some of those other issues. So, am I, 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 it was just my thought, I have a couple other comments. I, I don't think that putting a, a walkway behind every house in the subdivision is a recreational opportunity. I mean, for me, it's like a peeping tom opportunity. You look in the back of every property, and I don't, if I lived here, I don't want people walking, what effectively would be walking through my backyard. And it's literally every, maybe one or two properties don't, but almost every property has a walkway in their backyard. These aren't gonna be fenced off, I'm assuming, so, I mean, some people might fence their property off, but, but realistically, it would look like people were walking through your backyard. I would much rather see a consolidated recreation area where someone could actually go and recreate, you know, something that would allow you to gather with a group maybe, and not, not impose that on every house in the subdivision as a walkway. I mean, we have sidewalks, lots of people walk on sidewalks, so, so I don't see this, this concept. I'd like to see a more creative concept as to how RVG might be applied, but first, you know, go back to the beginning of this conversation, I would want to see, and I would assume the, the people who live north and south of this would more like to see how this would be consistently developed with R4 zoning. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Sedoti. As part of your planning process, your due diligence, how many houses can you develop legally under the R4 zoning of the site?
I mean, we didn't, haven't done a layout, but it's 16 acres.
32.
I was gonna say, at half acre, so you're at 32.
Someplace given for recreation, maybe it's 30, and you don't have a, you see what I'm saying?
And I strongly agree with my colleague, Mr. Varga, especially on the open space. You have a lot of areas where it narrows down to what, 10 feet, and that's, you know, that's basically walking through my backyard or behind my backyard, and then invades my privacy and raises other issues, too. And I just wanted to state that for the record. Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This might be for the applicant as well, but one of the comments from the city engineer was that there's possible detention needed on that development, which I guess in theory, too, might help shape what kind of development actually goes in there. I would have taken that into consideration. Thank you.
I just have one other comment I just forgot to mention, and that is that, and you acknowledge that, that the lot is heavily wooded. When I see a, a development scheme like this, I see no trees, I mean, I know you're not showing trees, but I basically see a bulldozer come in and flatten this for development. Finding a way to maintain a significant amount of trees in some area might be the key to that recreational area, you know, centralized, that would then eliminate the need to have all these walkways behind everybody's property. But that, again, that's referring to an RVG-type of development, but I think, you know, we're looking for, I think consistent zoning practice would be, why change this development as R4, or at least show us that you can't develop this at R4 for some reason.
Mr. Chairman.
Go right ahead, Mr. Philippi.
Just one, one comment for the record. Regardless of whether this were developed under its present zoning of R4, or were to be rezoned to RVG, the city's concern would remain with respect to the length of that cul-de-sac. There is always, you know, we have moved far away from the idea of these long extended cul-de-sacs. We just worked out a very reasonable accommodation with the applicant just a little while ago. And in this particular case, the suggestion for a connecting street off of Belglow was really just a, just that, just a suggestion, because there is common ownership. But under any circumstance, I, I don't recall what the length of that was, Kathy, what, 18, 1800 feet, 2000 feet, something like that?
Street A was 1,047, and Street B was 701.
So, in either case, you know, the 600-foot cul-de-sac requirement by code, we think would need to apply here, because, you know, under our code definitions, we, we would not view anything unusual about the topography or the property configuration here to really justify that safety risk.
Fine. I think we agree up here.
Yeah. That's why I'm here.
So you have your marching orders?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Kathy, anything else you want to tell them?
Thank you.
Okay. Directors' report. Kathy, anything under the directors' report?
I wanted to address two items. There were a few minor subdivisions that were approved administratively, and per the code, we're actually supposed to give you a report on that. So, I wanted to let you know that at the end of January, Lakefront Park LLC proposed a lot line adjustment for some property on Headlands Road for two lots. It's kind of a unique parcel that had, had property to the north and south of Headlands Road, and it did not, with the split that was proposed, it met zoning, so it didn't need to go in front of the planning commission, so that was one item that was approved. Mr. Ralph Harrison owns some property on Munson Road, actually just north of the Key Bank here, north of the Civic Center. And a similar situation where, despite the road being there, there were three, there are three parcels that exist that, that's bisected by Center Street, and they were subdividing it, and, and again, into conforming lots. So, that was, that was approved on February 5th. And then I'm most familiar with the property on Norton Parkway, the Mennery Hub Facility property, which is being split off for the memory care facility. That is all but completed, we're just waiting on a couple internal signatures, but that one is, is, is ready for approval, so we're, we're good to go with that one as well. And also, I just wanted to respond to the concern raised at the last meeting, at the end of the last meeting, Mr. Sedoti, with regard to Taco Bell. We've been doing a lot of research on that. We even have the, the paneling that was approved at the time, back in 17. We reached out to GPD Group, the architects of the project. There were, apparently at the time, we couldn't find anything specifically in the minutes that spoke to it, but the metal panel is intended to have that rustic look, and it will change over time. Right now, it looks like it's incomplete, but they've assured us that that will continue to change. And actually, even since the picture you took, it looks like the one side has even improved further in terms of at least a consistent rusted look from top to bottom.
Yes, sir.
Right. So, that was what was approved, and we do have the, again, a piece of that metal panel that was presented at the planning commission back at that time.
Yeah, I had a comment on that, too, and I supported his observations. I looked at it again after we talked, and that's fine, that's all good. I understand the nature of that kind of panel and how that develops a patina over time. And I'm just bringing this up, I still have a little concern, because the specific streaking that we both have seen seemed to come from the, from the sign, and even from the coping at the top. And I'm, our concern may be that there's fascinars of a different metal type that may be affecting the way this is happening. I guess just look at it over time.
Okay.
If it looks like this again, six months or a year from now, I think there may be an issue with the way they detailed it, because it could be differential metals that are causing that, and not just an uneven patina.
At that meeting, you're gonna have to look at the minutes. I don't think we got into that kind of detailed dibby Larry about how these metal panels are gonna look over a certain period of time. I don't recall that discussion.
I believe we did have some discussion concerning that, because when we reached out to the architect, she recalled having that discussion also. It was brought up, it may not have been a detailed discussion, but it was brought up that these metal panels, as their building samples show, and Tina.
All right. So we're gonna keep an eye on it?
We're gonna keep an eye.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mr. Anything else?
I guess one other thing, I, I know Mr. Zeeman wants to, to speak. We, um...
We'll get to Mr. Zeeman when we go to the law directors' report.
We, we were asked by the chairman of the commission to resurrect the design awards, and, for those that are new to the process, I don't know if, if, Mr. Snow, if you wanted to speak to that, but what we, we've, we've gotten started on, on what this might look like. We're taking a look at projects that were issued permits in, in 17 and 18, and we're breaking them up based on how the awards were previously issued, for an award for a commercial building, an industrial building, a re-imaging project, as well as landscaping. So, this is a, just a, a starting point of what we're looking at, and as, as we, as we clean this up, we'll continue to bring you more information. I think one of the key things we're waiting for is the spring, and, and the opportunity for some of the landscaping that we're, that is intended to be installed is actually in, in fact, installed, so...
We have 18 months to worry about that.
Yeah, so we've got a little bit of time.
I'm kidding.
Well, 18 months, right. But I just wanted you to know that the internal review is underway. I think when we, when we pulled the, the old files, we'll hopefully be able to present to you something a little bit more sophisticated. I think there were some Polaroids and some older pictures that...
As Larry can attest, this goes back many, many years.
Right.
And, and some, some guys do some very good work in this city.
Absolutely.
And we ought to pat them on the back and give them attaboy when they do good work. And that's one of the reasons why we wanted to resurrect this.
I, in having not gone through it myself, I'm kind of excited about it. I actually thought we should have a Planner's Choice Award, too, so that if one of the items wasn't chosen that we thought was chosen, we could maybe put our...
We can discuss a tiebreaker scenario.
Okay.
And if, could any of us add something to this list?
Absolutely. So this is, this, again, this is just a starting point. If you feel like we've missed something, please send an email, let us know, and as, as, you know, the spring brings us some more opportunities to take some photos and get some of the true landscaping, good shots of that, then we'll start doing that and then bring more information.
And I wasn't around in the past, so we have a list, how do we choose? How, how does it get chosen? How do some awards get chosen?
We vote.
We, us up here, or that, including the...
Seven members of the commission vote.
Okay. Cool.
So, thanks.
Excellent.
Anything else? Mr. Zeeman?
I've got an award for most code-compliant project.
Most? How about just a code compliant?
Anything, yeah.
Anything under the law directors' report?
Sure, Mr., yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm trying to take up too much time. I just want to kind of just talk briefly and get a little quick feedback. I think as the commission's aware, 2019's probably gonna be a pretty active year for some code revisions, and over the years, I'm often getting questions, or other members, or yourselves are getting questions, you know, about certain areas and, and why not targeting certain areas for certain types of uses. And the discussion seems to always center around how to revise the district regulations or rezonings, or things of that nature. And so I just wanted to briefly talk about whether or not there's some interest in, in taking a deeper dive into overlay zoning. Simple definition for an overlay is the underlying zoning never changes, but there are some additional uses and development that may be allowed consistent with that underlying zoning, and the purpose of it is sort of to target various areas that may be necess, that, you know, may be lying fallow for, for, for too long, or vacant too long, or underutilized in some way, and to target them specifically to suit what the community believes its needs are. And so if, people are often talking about the area around the, the Great Lakes Mall, so I think, Mr. Rast, if you can pull that up. This act, this, I, this is gonna be a little misleading, because, one, the aerial's a little old, and also I've sort of outlined some things, not necessarily because there's a massive problem, but just to sort of illustrate an area that I think a lot of people are familiar with. The red highlighted areas are current vacancies. Some of the parcels are very large. You'll see in the lower portion, the currently vacant Sears site, that's 20 acres. And when I say it's vacant, it just means that Sears is no longer operating. It, it actually is utilized in part for parking in support of the mall, so it's not as though there's no activity occurring there. Likewise, you'll see up towards the top, the Toys R Us, that now closed facility, and there's some adjacent vacant parcels there. Immediately off to the west, you'll see it's actually industrially zoned land, approximately a little over 20 acres in there, and that's, that's been vacant for decades. And I even highlighted the former school site, as well as some other areas. Now, again, I don't mean to be misleading, because this aerial is actually old, and, and of course, tonight, you saw some significant economic development with the Hobby Lobby. This doesn't show the Outback, it doesn't show, I don't think, BJ's Brew House, or the Core Life Eatery. So this is by no means a, a depressed economic area. But, we're often asked, how do you get ahead of the curve relative to zoning and making sure that, that areas are properly situated, so that when the current zoning or the current permitted uses are no longer enough to facilitate either the redevelopment or the... permitted uses are no longer enough to facilitate either the redevelopment or the continued viability of the development that does exist, what are some tools, both zoning and economic development, that can be brought to bear? And that's where maybe the overlay comes in a little bit. And so, Mr. Rast, if you could go over, I've got a couple just simple slides I'll go through real quickly. This is, it's just, when I say commercial corridor, I mean also general business and industrial. I mean those two things, and I'm not referring to residential. And we're often asked, what are some of the market demands? For example, what does zoning have to be responsive to? What should the city be looking to potentially, if not incentivize, perhaps better target? And rental units is something that has been on the radar screen for quite some time. Mr. Rast, if you can go to the next slide. I think I've just got some, just some brief census data. Most of that is from the 2010 census, which of course is the most recent. And you'll see at the, at the top, the city's population, the 27 estimate, doesn't really have it changing. It's certainly well within the, the margin of error on the census data. And we've certainly have no shortage of housing units with over 20,000. And of significance is the owner occupied, at least as of 2010, 85 and a half percent. What we have been seeing is an increase in some of the residential rentals, and we have, of course, has a residential rental registration program. And currently, there's 589 single-family duplex and maybe a triplex or two that qualify for that program. So these are single-family detached and a couple duplexes that are not owner occupied, but, but are rental units. And that, that's actually increasing. There are some, there is some trending upward in, in the amount of those housing units that are being devoted to rental, to rental purposes. Some of that increase may just be because, you know, frankly, not everyone registers, whether they're aware of the, the program or not. And so enforcement accounts for some of that increase, but also some of that increase is just additional rental units coming into the market. Granted, some things may not, you know, kind of, the actual number may be a little bit higher than that. Again, not everyone is, is compliant with that program. But you're seeing that trend up, and at the same time, we are seeing with the existing multifamily rental stock that it's fairly dated. Doesn't mean it's in bad shape, but whether or not it's, you know, in accordance with contemporary living standards, more often than not, the case, the answer to that is no. The floor plans, the amenities and the buildings and things of that nature, they're just not in accordance with where the market is currently is. And just an additional statistic, you'll note owner occupied homes, and make a 2010 census as well, about 2.48 occupants in an owner occupied unit, and then you get smaller for a rental unit, just a little above, above two. So it's, it's a, it's a different market demand for the, for the rental units versus the owner occupied. Frankly, it's just less people tend to live in them. And Mr. Rast, if you could go to the next one. Some of the market drivers for the rental units that, and there's others, but obviously some are transitional, people downsizing, they're, they're getting out of ownership. They're not ready to buy. Short-term housing is something that, we've got a lot of communications back from the corporate community here in Mentor. And transitional housing for persons that they're trying to transfer into Mentor, trying to recruit persons to come to town, persons here on perhaps a short stay, and that could be a year potentially, where they're here on some type of a temporary assignment and not permanently relocating. We have heard back from the corporate community that this is a, a market need that is not necessarily being fulfilled. And then increasingly, there's some persons who just, you know, for whatever reasons, they have zero intention of ever owning, and so they're looking for some, some good options relative to rental units. And so that raises the question as to if there's a market demand for it, where do you put it? And we certainly have, still have some greenfields left in the city, but the vast majority of the city, frankly, is single-family detached, and trying to get a multifamily unit in the middle of a, a single-family detached neighborhood, you know, just may not be a good fit. And so that raises the question. Do we have some areas in the city currently zoned for commercial, general business and industrial that perhaps an overlay zoning? And I'm not, again, I'm using the rental units as sort of the, the jumping off point for this type of overlay zoning, but it doesn't have to be that. It could be many different types of industries or construction. So the question is whether or not perhaps looking at an overlay and where, without changing the current zoning, having, taking a look at property that may no longer be viable, whether it's for industrial or, or general business use, and, and whether or not targeting those specific parcels via an overlay so that potentially they could be redeveloped for some mixed use and, and of course, rental units as well, whether or not that's a direction that makes sense for the city. And go to the next slide, Mr. Rast. So why, why bother with that? Why not just kind of keep things open-ended? As you saw with our population growth, we're dealing with, you know, we're dealing with a finite amount here. We don't necessarily know exactly what that finite amount is, but we do know that ultimately it's exhausted. Population is not necessarily growing, although their needs may be changing. And so that's really the sort of what we maybe need to react to or think about reacting to, is how may it diminish the viability of the city moving forward if we don't have diverse housing options for, for persons looking to either stay here or move in or relocate here? We do know intuitively, though, because of regional, there just is no regional population growth, that we're dealing with a finite amount. And so what you allow in one area of the city may mean that something, that, that same type of development will never occur or not occur in any, you know, reasonable timeframe anywhere else in the city. And so if you've got a market demand for something, whether it's rental units or, or some other type of industry, and you know ultimately, once that market demand is satisfied, that what I call the reserve demand, and that reserve demand could be a, could be a pinpoint, you kind of never know until you've gotten better data, then that's the end of it. And then that ability to leverage that demand to target redevelopment or something in some of those other areas that may, may eventually become distressed is forever lost. And so that's one of the purposes of, of an overlay zoning as well, is to sort of target specific areas to meet a specific market demand where it's, where those two things are compatible. And there's different mechanisms to do that. You don't necessarily have to just say, all right, build whatever you want, whenever you want. You may want to have an overlay, and maybe the next slide? Where the purpose and intent is, again, to target specific areas where there is significantly underutilized, either commercial, industrial parcels, and you have definitions for what it means to be significantly underutilized, that you're not taking really prime land and taking that out of the market pipeline, but you're necessarily targeting that which may not be viable. Obviously, the second is to modernize the city's rental housing stock and, and of course, expand the economic base of the city as well. And I don't know if the next slide is too, too far. Ah, that's not going to be logical. I'm sorry about that. So that just kind of shows, you can go to it, I'll just talk through it a little bit. That just shows kind of a hierarchy where, you know, you have to answer some, some type of inquiries. And development for purposes of the overlay isn't automatic. Some benchmarks have to be satisfied. One, is it significantly underutilized? So we would look at something, look at the history of it, project out, you know, into a foreseeable future, what the market demand may be moving forward. And then looking at redevelopment and saying that, you know, your proposal isn't going to be acceptable under this overlay, you know, unless it's got development consistent with the purpose and intent of, of the overlay. And, and you can have some benchmarks relative to, you know, net economic benefits. And then, of course, you know, taking a look at, you know, performance standards, both economic, resiliency factors, I won't get into that tonight. That's probably something to talk a little, resiliency is another new thing that we want to talk a little bit more about moving forward, and that, that's form and design. And then, of course, site development, design and standards. So these things all, all have to fall into place before a project would be approved under that, and that's a very, very restrictive overlay, obviously. It doesn't have to be that restrictive, but it can be, and that's why I wanted to illustrate. So I've done a lot of talking, I know. I just wanted to see if I can get any quick feedback as to whether or not that's something that, at least a framework, you know, that's all I can do is, you know, as an attorney and a land use lawyer, is I put together a framework, and then the appropriate professionals start filling in that framework, be it design, site planning, engineering, or whatever that might be. So, so I was hoping to get some feedback from the commission relative to, to that task.
Go ahead.
The city would take some initiative in locating or identifying these opportunities, but you'd be looking at, you know, developers to make the, take the action, to identify the project? Is that, is that the flow of activity that you're looking at?
Right. It's, it's very difficult to say, all right, here, just build that there and nothing else. That's what typical zoning is. In an overlay, you're creating an option for property owners and developers. Option, well, option number one is, you know, just utilize it consistent with the existing zoning. Option number two is knowing that the city has, has, that the property may qualify for revitalization purposes, and knowing that the, the city has specific purpose and intent with an overlay and saying, well, you know what? We, we think that, yes, there is a market for this product. We think that this property probably does satisfy the city's definition of something that's underutilized, and, and we think that we can put together a project which is going to be, is going to satisfy all of the city's purpose and intents. And so here, here is what it is. The project doesn't get approval unless it does, in fact, satisfy those benchmarks. Now, should it be this property or that property, that property? Obviously, this is very dynamic, and you, you really don't know what, until you do a very, very deep analysis, what parcel may, may qualify or not. Obviously, it has to be something with, with either a good history of being underutilized or based on some objective measures, whether it's, you know, whatever data that may be from some reliable third-party sources. You know that this property is probably not likely to ever realize its highest best use under the current zoning, and that the overlay may, may be appropriate in that location.
So this would give, the city flexibility would give the developers flexibility, but it could also allow for opportunities to do multi-use projects?
Sure.
And, or which would, which really in single zoning has a hard time finding a home, but under this kind of view, you would be able to get something like that to a multi-use project?
Is anybody successfully working this in other cities in the area? Do you know of?
No.
So we could be cutting edge?
I, I would hope we can, I would hope so, yes. There's, there's multi-use projects, but the city of Cleveland has zoning, which is, frankly, extremely difficult to follow. There's so many zoning districts, and the regulations are so dramatically different. I don't consider it overlay, but I, I think in terms of nimbleness, maybe the city of Cleveland would, would, you know, but its, its zoning code is really, really something that's very difficult to follow, quite frankly. They get things done there, but that's probably the only thing that I would think would be comparable relative to its flexibility, only because it's so, there's just so many different classifications, it's remarkable. Now, other cities do, do allow for mixed use as of, as of...
So how do you see this progressing?
I just want to get some feedback and see whether or not it's something that should progress, quite frankly, if there's any interest in it.
Yes. I certainly think there's an interest. I mean, you have a lot of cities throughout the state of Ohio that are doing similar things. I think Dublin comes to mind. I think they're doing some similar things. I don't know if anything is going on in Toledo area, but...
If I could, Mr. Chairman, yeah.
I threw Toledo in there because I knew that's where you heralded from.
I am familiar, and I'm very familiar with overlay districts, and yes, they are used effectively in a lot of communities in the United States and some in Ohio. I think the, the law director's not attempting to indicate how and where we might use these because we work those out over time and, but for different motivations and what have you. But as a mechanism, I, I think it would be something that we would want to embrace.
I would, I would certainly hope so.
I mean, flexibility and typically for, whether it's brownfield sites or difficult retail redevelopment sites, or some, in some cases, communities use them for, usually these are redevelopment purposes, whether that's in neighborhoods or commercial areas. And it's certainly a tool that we would want to consider here, and we've talked a lot about it. I, I think the essence of our current redrafting of PUD regulations that we'll bring to you here, certainly this year, for consideration, is at the heart of that. It's about providing some flexibility, whether that's for mixed use development or meeting market demands.
Well, we have, we have two guys going to the APA out in San Francisco this year, and I would hope that they could attend any seminars that might be worthwhile attending on this subject. Right, Brian?
Sure.
And Mr. Vargas?
I think that's a call to action, right?
Absolutely.
I mean, I would think, you know, you're going, you're going to hear the best and the brightest, hopefully. I think we heard the best and the brightest tonight, but that would be you, Joe.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Appreciate that. Yeah, and again, what's a little bit different about this type of overlay? And I think that where some overlays would allow it almost as of right, this is really something which is highly restrictive. And if you can't, if you can't make the case, and not just opinion, but through some hard data, that it's appropriate, then it, then it can't happen. And if you can't make the case that it's going to satisfy the long, long-term needs of the city via certain resiliency factors, and I'll just briefly, when talking about resiliency, it's a term that's borrowed from, from, from the engineers. You know, it's, it's the ability of something to recover from a disaster. Obviously, the engineers typically, you know, utilize that for type of a natural disaster. Well, here, when we're talking about resiliency in design and form, we're talking about, you know, market economic disasters, so to speak, and does this project have sufficient resiliency to recover via change in use or, or changing desires in the market? And that kind of comes full circle to what I'd indicated relative to some of our existing housing stock. It's just not suitable and really can't, can't be easily made suitable for what persons are looking for in rental units. The floor plans, they just, they just don't work for some consumers out there. And so when we're talking about resiliency, we're talking about something that, again, in form, can be very responsive without having to blow it up and start all over again and not have to, to have to hope that a project ultimately is successful, not just for the next few years, but for decades to come. So that's the, that's a little bit of a different focus on, on this type of overlay, where we're looking out, you know, 50 years perhaps. Or, you know, don't do the project at all.
Gotcha. Okay. So guys can get back to you with any questions or comments?
Yeah, any suggestions, any feedback, if you think it's completely off the rails, you know, let us know.
We can certainly do that.
Absolutely.
I think there's a lot of opinions floating around this, this dais, so... Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other things for the good of the country? Okay, we'll adjourn.